I will call this special meeting of the Bethel Board of Selectment to order for Wednesday, November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
And to the public for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. First order of business, we'll just get this out of the way quickly. We have three vacancies to refill. These are midterm vacancies. All three of these folks happen to be Democrats, so I will put a motion on the floor that we approve the following. Nick Viti Jr. to replace Bonnie Brown and the Economic Development Commission. Ken Kopeck to replace Tom O'Leary and the Insurance and Pension Commission. And Pat Orsino to replace Dina Valenti on the Ethics Commission. So is there a second? Rich has seconded the motion. Any discussion? In hearing none, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that motion carries and we'll get out letters to those folks today. I think Ken actually joined the First Insurance and Pension Commission as a non-voting member today. So he's, he's already, he's already jumped into it. So I thank all three people for volunteering and I thank the others for the service that they gave the town. So on to the consideration of the Fire, Fire Commission. I want to welcome former Chief Kenny Parciaseppi, Chief John Baker, Chief Scott Murphy. And of course, former chief and director of almost everything that burns or otherwise catches fire, Tom Galliford. And so I don't expect to have a vote tonight. I just wanted to have a discussion with you guys. I think you've had a chance to look over the draft that has been now updated a couple of times, correct?
Yeah.
So we would like to have your input and we'd like to know what you, how you think this would best work, what you think you should avoid. Any changes that would be made. And let me, let me, before you start, let me just say one thing, which I think is important. There's been a lot of press about the, the tower truck and how we wound up here. This is a far more positive thing in my mind. And I really think we're long overdue to do something like this. And I'll just, I'll just use the, the, the fact that Tom brought to us this year, the, the the request for radios. We, we need three hundred and fifty thousand, I think, or so for radios to replace the, the radios. I think what we need is just a, a more a, a longer timeline. We need people who can pull the two departments together. Look at their long-term needs. We've, we folded fire equipment, fire apparatus, the, the big stuff into the capital planning long ago. But every year, I know for, just for me personally, being not really well-educated in the, in the fire services. You know, I, I, I know that there's a certain number of breathing apparatus, the self-contained breathers that we need to replace, certain amount of turnout gear. Certain amount of other equipment, the hearst tools. I think what we need is just a longer view of how to plan for the future and coordinate both departments. Seeing as how we have so many dedicated volunteers that are working for one town. How do we make the best use of that without duplicating efforts? Or without letting one department or the other go without something that they need? So it's, it's like, like many, many other towns that, that have fire commissions or similar structures in place in their town government. That's how I see the role of this, this group functioning. So with that, I will, first let me ask Rich and Paul if you wanted to add anything before we open up the floor for discussion.
No, I think you covered it all, Matt, pretty much.
And I, I would say the same thing here, except that, you know, the one thing that I'm always concerned with, it's the fact of maintenance, okay? We've seemed to have, you know, it's just not the fire department, but you know, there's other areas too in the town. That maintenance seems to always fall off the truck occasionally. And you know, with the type of capital equipment that we've got, I think we've got to maintain records which are available, okay? Specifically by, by the piece of a capital equipment, namely the trucks themselves, okay? And perhaps even some of the gear that goes along with it. And you know, whether it's, it's the building, the capital equipment, whether it's trucks or other things like this. This is where I think a fire commission will come into play to, you know, plan, you know. I'm, I'm, I'm a person of planning. And you know, this is some things that sometimes we're just putting a guess on some things. And I just like to avoid this such that when it comes down to the annual budget, we, we know where we're at. We know where we're going in the future. So I, those, those are my comments.
All right. Thank you. With that, I'll, I'll open up the floor for, for feedback and comments. So yeah, go ahead.
Hi, it's Tom. Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll start it off. I don't mind. So as you know, I, I sent, I gained some comments on your draft proposal and hopefully Rich and Paul saw it as well.
Yeah, everybody got that.
All right. Yeah. So again, whether or not, you know, we need a commission or not is not what I'm going to debate. But if we're going to do this, I think it needs to be done the right way the first time and cover all the bases and all the areas that we need to cover. You know, and I've been a big advocate for many years now that there's nowhere in the town charter or any town ordinance that recognizes or states that the Bethel Fire Department, the Stony Hill Fire Department are kind of the, the clear agencies that provide fire and EMS services to the town. And I think that's an important part that needs to be put into this commission somehow, into the ordinance, into the wording. So that's in there. I mean, and I kind of spelled that out there. You know, we've had some issues with you know, with a lawsuit years ago and whether or not the fire departments were town agencies or not. And who was going to supply counsel for us? So it, it creates an issue. So that, that's something I think is, we've got to just, you know, really take our time and make sure we're able to, to put that in there somehow. And I provide some sample wording and whatnot, which is very similar to what a lot of other, other towns do.
Let me just say that that, that is, you're exactly right about that. That's a, that's a good suggestion. And I, and I think it's a necessary one. Just so everybody on the call knows, under, under Connecticut law, which has changed an awful lot since the eighteen thirties, when Bethel's first volunteer company was organized. The taxpayers are responsible for quite a bit. And we've already had like workers' compensation insurance, for example. Volunteers are considered to be employees of the town under employment law. So the town does have to cover unemployment insurance if somebody gets sick or injured. So we've already had some issues come up with related to COVID or fire scene minor injuries. So we're, we're all joined at the hip anyway. So I think you're exactly right, Tom. The time has long passed to formalize it, to define the relationship and define the roles and responsibilities and move forward from there. Because to your point, when I looked at not so much town charters, but town ordinances from, from other towns. They all do have ordinances that spell out that relationship. And I think that that would be a benefit to all parties.
Right. Yeah, absolutely. And then the, and the other big point that I just want to just state here for the record, and again, it's noted in there is, you know, we, we had this current EMS commission that was developed years ago because of issues with EMS. So you know, that, there's already something on the book, so to speak, that deals mainly with EMS. But I just think it might be a, a better intent to kind of combine a fire, make it a, you know, maybe revise that in order to make it a fire and EMS commission and kind of change the, the powers and duties of that and what their roles are. So that's one commission. We don't have redundancy in, in two different commissions. And you know, they, they're going to overlap as far as reporting and you know, having the ability to get paperwork and financial documents and whatnot. So I just think it would be a wise, wise choice and a wise move to kind of combine it into one commission that is, that covers both fire and EMS under one.
So you're like, sort of like a public safety commission that, that covers both of them?
Yeah. I mean, if you just call it the Fire and EMS Commission, you know, whatever, whatever word is, but yeah, because public safety kind of gives you, you know, just the, it's a nuance of words of public safety. You kind of throw police in there too, and they have their separate commission and they're a whole separate entity. So wise to, to make it part of that, you know, just so we don't have two separate commissions that, again, like I said, there, I think there's going to be a lot of overlap in there.
Yeah. How often does the EMS Commission meet?
Well, by ordinance, it's supposed to be quarterly, but we, they, they don't meet very often at all. So that, that's part of the problem too.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. And again, the only other thing really I noted in here is as far as who's going to be on the commission. You know, there's a note in here, your note states about a current member of the fire department or the fire companies are not precluded from serving on the commission.
Yeah, that was, that was, yeah, that's one of the suggestions.
Yeah. Well, you know, my only concern with that is for some reason, member of Stony Hill is on it, but not a member of Bethel isn't appointed. And vice versa, you know, does that kind of create any kind of issue as far as, you know, equal representation? So is it that someone, a member of each fire department is always on it? Or someone from the fire department is never on the commission? I just think that needs to be clarified better.
Okay.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah. All right.
So those are my big issues, you know, or points of clarification I think would be important to have on there. And again, I just added some other things like submitting an annual report to the, the commission, you know, just to kind of give them an annual report. I'm just questioning whether the commission should have to get monthly reports or quarterly reports for, you know, billing and, and financial information and call summaries. Just again, it's just another, another thing to have to produce in a short order for the, you know, the, the fire chiefs and the volunteers to, to provide that on a monthly basis? Or is it easier to do it quarterly or whatnot?
What, what, what would you suggest? What do you think works?
I, I, I think quarterly be okay. I mean, a monthly, you know, financial statement's not really going to show you much from month to month. I mean, I think quarterly would probably be.
I don't think we have that much going on that more than.
Yeah. And a month's time isn't going to, you know, be an eye-opener to something. So I, I think maybe quarterly may be better.
Okay. Scott and John, does, I mean, does that work? Or I mean, we're, we're not trying to create busy work.
Yeah. Well, that was my concern is if we're doing something on a monthly basis or even a bimonthly basis, being volunteers, we spend enough time at the the process it is to try and create that frequently when there isn't that much going on as far as the, the call volume. And obviously submitting the, the invoices and bills to the finance board. So they have an idea of what the, the financial aspect is. But I think quarterly would be more appropriate.
Okay.
I, I tend to, I tend to agree quarterly to be better. I think getting the paperwork organized. You know, we, we do, we do have a little bit of an upswing in our call volume downtown. I think it'd just be a lot easier quarterly to get everything together.
Okay.
Hey, Matt, it's Kenny. Let me just, let me just chime in. Hi, guys. How are you? I, I agree with everything Tommy said, right? Tommy and I have spoken a little bit. Couple of things I'd highlight, right, is, you know, the, the funding methodology for the fire department because of the blending of the nonprofit corporation and the town funds is very complex. Right? It's not as simple as the police department because it's, they get their money from one place and one place only, right? And it's pretty straightforward. You know, everything is paid for by the town. When you mix in the, the fire department and EMS especially, right, it gets complicated. Right? And, and members of the public may not understand those nuances, right? So I, although I agree with, you know, Tommy Chief Galliford about not having someone from, from the fire department on. I don't know how you don't have anybody from the fire department on. Because, you know, you know, take the topic of computers, because I know it came up with Bethel Fire, right? You know, here's a line, is the computer used for EMS work? Or is the computer used for fire department work? If, if they should be funded from two different places, depending upon the answer, right? A, a member of the general public wouldn't even know they asked that question, right? So I, I, I know there can be friction between the two departments. But I don't know how this group that you guys want to propose, which I think is a very, very good idea, succeeds if you don't have input from the fire department. Now, maybe the not formal voting members of the commission, maybe their advisory members to the commission. I, I don't know what the, the right thing to do is. But I think the conversations that take place have to include the perspective of a knowledgeable person in, in the town that's been involved with both departments. I just, you know, it's just, it's not going to be, it's not going to be successful if you keep the fire department at arm's length, I think.
That, good point. I'm glad you brought up the issue of, of the computers. Because that's a, that's something that just popped up recently. And it really, it's, it's another goal that we need to achieve because it, it came to my attention that Scott, I think it was from your department that you, you needed some help with, with, was it machines? With, with, with basic computers or was it internet connectivity?
It's, two, two of my computers are still on Windows seven. It would be my computer and my assistant chief's computer. It's not the EMS ones. It's, it's the fire department ones.
See, my feeling is it's time that we integrate both, both houses into the, into the, the overall technology plan of the town, both for computer connectivity and for phones. You know, how can you be an agency of the town and be? I, I don't even know how you can still operate a Windows seven machine anymore because there's hardly anything that's compatible with it. So I think this is a responsibility of the town to, to integrate that so that you guys are fully online. And we, we can reach each other. You can reach the public too.
Well, that's, that's what we're, we're trying to do. You know, we just conversations with Nick, we just get our phones upgraded. They're still doing some work on that. And while I was there, I said, you know, these two computers, we need to get upgraded. And they're both, they're both town-owned computers. They're both the fire computers. EMS purchases their own and they, they maintain their own. Like, you know, Kenny said, it's, it's, there's a line there and a lot of people don't understand how that line works. And, and some of the general public wouldn't know what to, what to ask or how to approach some things. Maybe a way to do it is to have, because the two chiefs have to report, maybe have the two chiefs of the department be ex officio-type members of the commission would, you know, would be one way to resolve the problem. You know, where you have input from both departments and you don't have, like Tommy said, you know, this one from Stony Hill or this one's on there from Bethel, but no one's here. And, and you don't have that going on.
You know, and, because just to Paul's comment about, about capital plans. Paul, you probably remember, because I did it for years, we used to submit a capital plan for all capital items, right? And then for whatever reason, the, the boards asked us to not to do that any longer. So we did do that planning. I, I will say though, sometimes it fell on, on, on the, on the budget room floor all the time. But we did at times for years and years produce capital plans for all items that were above X amount of dollars, right? For whatever reason, that procedure stopped.
Well, you know, my, my comment is essentially, if you look at industry and you know, we, we all served in industry. These, these plans are always flexible from year to year.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking of bringing this thing into the twenty-first century, you know. Unfortunately, some things we were just allowed to go by the wayside and that's usually because of budgetary things. But I think a part of a fire commission, and I, I like Scott's idea about advisory, having perhaps a chief from each department participate in the, the commission. Because you know, here we sit on the Board of Selectment and the only time we really hear from you is budget time specifically, okay? For, for capital equipment. Whereas a fire commission, you know, they, they can be on top of it constantly. And push comes to shove, you know, they always can come to the Board of Selectment for, for, for a particular issue. I, I, I understand what Kenny, what you were saying relative to capital equipment for EMS. Perhaps in this document, we should specify what is EMS responsible for capital equipment and separating it from the fire side.
Yeah, it's not that simple to do, Paul. It's, it's possible.
You have to start someplace, you know.
Agreed. I mean, you know, there's, I don't, I don't, you know, I've been around for a long time, right? You know, thirty-plus years. I don't remember ever having a conversation with the town about where the lines fell between the nonprofit and the town, right? Probably something long, long overdue, right? But that, I don't think that conversation ever, ever has happened. It's up to the, to the chief and to the board of the nonprofit to decide on certain budgetary things. You know, who gets to pay this bill? Is it the company bill or is it the town bill, right? There's some judgment involved there. You know, you take EMS training. Is it, it should it be, should it fall on the EMS company or should it fall on the town? You know, we use it in both sides of the, of the fence for the fire department and for the EMS side of, of the, of the department. So you know, those things have always been submitted to the town, right? But someone might debate that topic, right? We never really had those conversations, right?
Well, maybe, you know, we, we all know that EMS, it's an absolute necessity, okay? You know, I've always known that EMS, you guys take care of primarily, you know, in my mind, as just as a resident. It was always just the ambulances. We, we never discussed it, what, how far does that go relative? What is response, who is, what EMS is responsible for? And you know, maybe this is the time to put it in a document like that.
Yeah. And there's, there's, there's a huge crossover between firefighters that are also EMTs and EMTs that are operating on the ambulance, right? So it, you know, there's, it's a complicated picture. Because I don't think many people understand, we fund the ambulance directly, right? I mean, you got, the town helps us tremendously, right? The town provides a place to store it. You know, it provides the, the fuel for it, provides, you know, workers' comp for all the EMS members. It does a lot of things that most people probably wouldn't understand.
I agree. I agree. I just, I would just like to start it. That, that, that's.
Yeah, absolutely. I guess, I guess think that, you know, when you choose the members of this, of this commission, they need to be somewhat knowledgeable about fire and EMS service to have a fruitful conversation.
Oh, I agree with you. I fully agree with you.
And Kenny, this is, this is probably the time to start identifying some of those issues that, so it is written down. And you know, it's not so ambiguous that, you know, is it this or is it that? So maybe the fire commission can, you know, put some of those answers to bed, you know.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree, Rich.
You know, that, I, I'm, I'm seriously not trying to create another headache for anybody. But Kenny, your, your commentary about the, the ambulance corps brings up that issue again. Does it still make sense to have two entities in the same building that are separate financially, but not really?
Yeah, you mean, I'm, I'm, I'm very opinionated on that topic, you know, from my experience, right? I, I think you, the town benefits from the guidance of the fire chief. The two teams work so jointly together all the time. To, to separate them, in my opinion, would be, would be a mistake, right? I know others will disagree with me strongly. I, I, I really think they, I think the guidance. Now, maybe they're in a separate building and not in the fire department per se. But I think you benefit from the guidance. If you have a good fire chief, you benefit from the guidance of the fire chief. Right? Because it, because it's, it's one, it's one, the service is the one and the same, right? I mean, where you draw the lines is kind of arbitrary. But you know, you, if you have a good chief in place, no disrespect to anybody that's here on the, on the, on the call. It, it works, right? You know, if you separate it out, you, you now have a, a, another set of administrators to deal with. And I guess think that complicates the issue beyond where it used to be. That's my personal opinion.
Well, actually, my brain was going in the other direction about integrating, not separating. Like, you know, how can, if we're, if we're going to integrate the two fire operations and make sure that we're all on the same computer network for better communication, the same phones. This is a much longer conversation than just this fire commission discussion right now. But maybe it's time to integrate the ambulance side too, for the same reason.
Well, yeah. I think, I think, I think you've heard my opinion on that topic before, right? And I, 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 no, no, I agree. I agree. I mean, I, I agree that, you know, if we could work together better and there'd be less animosity between the companies, that there should be one EMS service. I think in the end, it's, it's a financial advantage to the town to do it that way. I think in the end, it's going to be, it's going to be easier to provide, easier than quotes, to provide the EMS service. Because you have a bigger pool of people to deal with, to, to pull from. And at times, you know, when the call volume is lower, you don't have two different departments trying to get a crew out at three o'clock in the morning for a call, right? If, if you combine staff, you get the opportunity to spread that, spread that load further, right? I'm, I'm, I've been in agreement for years since the conversations with Mr. Burke way back in the day that the services should be combined, right? So that tells you how long I've been on this page.
Right. And just, just to kind of touch on that, I, you know, I think there's some, a little nuanced difference of combining the EMS services into one or, you know, pulling them out of the firehouse. I mean, I think one PSA is what we've all kind of thought we should do. And then it's the question of, okay, if we combine the PSAs into one EMS agency, can they still stay in the firehouses and, and leave them, the ambulances in the building and, and use the town fuel and whatnot? Or rather than taking them out of the firehouses and having the, you know, either the nonprofit, the new nonprofit or whatever builds a building, you know, has to put up money to build a building? Or the town is going to put up money to, to build a separate facility? That's, that's a very long range question, you know, that part of it. As far as combining the two PSAs together into one EMS agency that works out of each fire station. I think, you know, I think that's, that's a, a shorter term goal. And then you move to whether you.
Yeah. And, and a, a benefit of that, if it goes, if, if that reorganization was, were to go well, was you could, you could absorb the, the paramedic PSA into that same program, right? And then, then that's really where you have the most flexibility on how to provide the service. And in the end, will definitely reduce the expenses to the town.
Yeah. And, and again, that's why I think this commission should be combined with the EMS commission. And the one where you have the ability and you have some of that, I don't say teeth or some of that, you know, information in there already in the EMS commission that allows, you know, for the town to, to help to steer that a little bit, so.
Yeah. I was, I was going to say the same thing. It, it argued, this, the whole EMS thing is a separate conversation. But it, it's, it's just something to put on the burner for phase two, maybe down, farther down the road. Once we get through this, but it, combining EMS and fire into one commission does, does make sense from that perspective. I, I agree with that. Okay. More comments? More feedback? Any, anything else?
I have no problem with the EMS and the fire commission being combined. There was one other thing that I was looking at as well is the combining of the, the two budgets and just having one budget for the entire fire department. I don't know how that would work.
Well, John, that was just, I mean, again, I was just writing stuff down. I was thinking about, I, I, you know, I think ultimately they, they kind of stay separate budgets like they do now. And, you know, and I, I think, you know, look at Newtown. They have a fire commission and they have five fire companies and they have five different budgets for each fire company. And they kind of leave it up to the, the fire departments and the fire chiefs to decide on, you know, what their budget needs are and, and the commission then kind of approves, approves it for them. So I think probably leaving it as one.
Yeah. I, I smiled, Tommy, because even Newtown, Newtown stuff is even more complicated than ours. Because some, some trucks are owned by the fire companies, some trucks are owned by the town. It's a, you know, every, everywhere you look, it's all done a little bit differently. Yeah. Right, right around us, it's done very differently. You know, Brookfield's a whole nother conversation about trucks and funding and everything else, right? So there's not, there's not a standard in the greater Danbury area of how the fire departments are funded and capital equipment's funded and all those things. It's, it's kind of, you know, I'll say, I'll say it this way, tongue in cheek. We are very lucky in the town. We are very lucky in the town of Bethel to get get the funding we get from the town.
That that does bring up a question that that I wanted to ask. Uh, both both companies do, I I know that there's fundraising on the ambulance side, but you on the fire side, do you guys do fundraising, private fundraising?
Uh, I I'll speak for Stony Hill and it's partly the same for for Bethel. It's one of the same, Matt. There's no, there's no differential.
All right. The reason I ask is, and this is one of the things that I think everybody, we all need to be, you know, on the same page and working as a team and and operating with full transparency. Uh, though, oh geez, this has been a year now. Last year, go just about this time, uh, I was at the CCM convention and talking to some colleagues of mine from around the state. We because it budget season was coming up and one of one of the first selectmen I talked to said, he says, yeah, he says, you know, we we cut back the operate, they they proposed a budget, they and they're structured just very similar to us. I don't know if they have one or two volunteer companies. It was a smaller town. He said, um, I tried, I I wanted to cut back on the operational side, you know, because they had some big expenses coming into their town operating budget and the the fire service pushed back on it real hard. And in the end, they said, um, the fire service said to the first selectman, I'll tell you what, leave the operational budget the way it is, the way we presented it, don't don't cut it back. The will 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 contribute a hundred thousand dollars to the next apparatus purchase. So so I that that piqued my interest because I've never heard of that. So it turns out that what they do is they have a separate fundraising thing and they just stick the money in the bank and they try to try to offset the cost of the the fire trucks. So is that something that we can do? What what are your thoughts about that?
Well, I'll tell you, Matt, the the fundraising, the the small percentage of profit from the EMS service billing. In Stony Hill, it goes to to purchase the ambulance, right? We spent, Tommy, two hundred and twenty, thirty thousand dollars on the on this latest bus.
Yeah, yes.
Which we paid for in cash, right? Based based upon saving money up for like twelve years, right?
Yep.
Well, that's where that fundraising and the small amount of profit that comes from the EMS billing after we pay for our staffing expenses goes to.
Right, and it goes to other EMS supplies. We both Bethel bought two Lucas's. We bought a Lucas device. You know, that's twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars alone for that device. You know, the AEDs, we so, yeah, the money, the money goes in for EMS. It doesn't, you know, there really.
Yeah, we 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 pay, we pay for all the EMS supplies in in years past. I mean, many years past, you we used to get it free from the hospital, but now the fire companies purchase all those supplies on the on the open market, right? And 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 as you know, from doing dealing with COVID stuff, none of it's cheap.
So the what you're saying is to to try to do the same thing on the fire side is just, is it what? Is that asking too much of the community that that you're you're fundraising in two different directions at the same time?
Yeah, I mean, I I give you an example, right, from what I know about Brookfield, right? Brookfield, for the most part, doesn't fund the fire service from the town budget, right? They fund the fire service from the um, from their fundraising drive and the townspeople know that, right? So the town, the townspeople kicking big to the fund drive because they know that's the majority of the money that that the fire department gets because they're not getting directly from the tax base, right? They do, the town does kick in in special circumstances at the request of the departments, right? But the people understand it. Here in Bethel, I think everybody understands it's in their taxes, right? You know, we we fundraise, um, you know, on behalf of the ambulance and the fire service. You know, to be completely transparent, the bulk of it goes to to um, to the EMS service because the town's providing the funding for the the fire department, right? Um, it's, um, you know, I mean, it's not, it's not a lot of money per se. You know, in today's standard, uh, it's, you know, twenty thousand dollars we raised, maybe? In the in the in the years fund drive, right? And with that, we're paying, you know, insurance on the ambulance, we're paying liability insurance for the ambulance. There's a significant amount of expenses that are tied to the operational aspect of the of EMS, right? And then on top of that, what we just talked about before, new equipment, day to day supplies. Um, you know, all those kind of things get wrapped up. You know, some some EMS education above and beyond what the town provides. And so, it, long story short, it's Matt, you you we you could try. But then you got in the conversation about, you know, who who needs the money more? Does the, do we need the money, you know, the small amount of money we might be able to kick over to the town? Um, maybe there's some special times where we can, right? And, um, but I don't think it can be anything consistent.
Okay.
Hey, Matt, it's interesting to hear some of these things from the both departments. But, you know, we've involved, uh, from, you know, one fire truck or two fire trucks in each department to, you know, a big operation now. So, you know, the town is growing so fast now that the department's needs are a lot different. So, you know, I I think, you know, we just, you know, rely rely on both departments doing their best, but maybe the oversight of a fire commission is is gonna help the overall process.
Well, I think it could help with budgeting for sure, especially longer range budgeting.
Well, you know, let me just pipe in here and just sort of support Kenny here. Um, when it comes to capital equipment, you know, uh, I understand like Brookfield, they they pay their own for the fire trucks themselves. I would be totally against that. Because it's just like I would be saying, hey, the police, you gotta fund your own for police cars and, uh, you know, th- this is safety. Uh, so I I I would not go that far, but I like the idea uh, what everybody's been talking about here tonight as a fact to combine EMS with fire and and this commission, EMS of Fire Commission. I I'm learning something here tonight that I never knew before, that you're paying for supplies. Uh, this, this is totally new to me. Uh, and you know, whether or not you recover it through expenses, uh, th- this should be noted, uh, within the community that, you know, a an ambulance call is not necessarily a free ride. It costs the town some money. And I I think we've got to sort of say, okay, when it comes to EMS training, it'd be just like fire training, okay? We pay, do we? We don't pay for fire training, do we? Yes, we do. Yeah, we do. So, you know, the same thing I think should apply to EMS training because it's a safety thing. But, uh, when there are certain capital things that, you know, like, uh, uh, the the trucks themselves and and the equipment onboard, uh, that 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 should be, you know, within the town itself or fire. But on on ambulance, I'd have to depend on on this commission to find to find out and talking with the the fire chiefs. Say, what has been the history and what's the direction should we go? Because this town is not going to stay where it is, you know? I remember when I moved to this town, we had what, seven thousand, sixty-five hundred people. We're approaching twenty thousand now. And, you know, I guess that the the top side of it is, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, I think the max is like twenty-three, twenty-two thousand.
Yeah, there was a study done in the late, in the mid-sixties, uh, tried to tried to predict how many people would live here for the purpose of building schools. That was back when, you know, the the town was considering building a new high school out at the the uh, high school campus. Uh, building a new middle school at some point in the future. And that study actually came in and I I I looked at that. I found it in a drawer a couple of years ago. I gave it to Dr. Carver. But it predicted that the town would top out with all buildable land being used up at twenty-two thousand. And today, I've I've gone over that with with Beth Cavagna. Uh, it, I don't think we'll ever get there. We'll probably never really, we'll probably top out somewhere between twenty and a half, maybe get closer to twenty-one, but that's really it because study predicted that there would be more high-density housing being built. And then the last twenty years, planning and zoning is really structured. You know, there there's some high-density housing that's been allowed in, uh, but for the most part, it's been single-family or duplexes. Uh, you know, there's there've been some more apartments being built in the last three or four years, but really, the 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 thrust has been for more single-family and there's not enough room to put, you know, two thousand more people, more homes there. Two thousand more people.
There's an overall philosophy that has changed too, because, you know, if I go back to nineteen seventy-five when I first moved here, we had a lot of volunteers, okay? Today, you're today, your EMS, uh, half of it's paid for, correct, if not more. Uh, and and as we're gonna go forward, you know, uh, most individuals don't live, uh, work in the town. So, you know, your volunteers and, you know, eventually, you know, we have to face the fact that I I hope this doesn't occur tomorrow, but, you know, maybe you're gonna have to have a full-time EMS division. I don't know. But this is the, this is the reason why I think, you know, a fire commission working in conjunction with the the chiefs, I think we can put things in a positive direction here.
Keith, what do you guys think of that?
EMS is, um, very tough on on the fire service side right now. I mean, we're we're dependent on the same people to run the ambulance twenty-four seven and then, you know, jump off the ambulance, jump on a fire truck if necessary. Um, tends to get a little a little hectic at times trying to get crews together. You know, right now, we do have the paid staff on both departments to make sure we get the ambulances out during the daytime hours. And we cover it for the most part, um, on our own with volunteers at night, which which is working out well. But the volunteer pool is a little thin sometimes too. And I think like Chief Parciaseppi was talking, to combine the the two um, departments, not into one entity, but get the crews to work together and and, you know, cross-train on the on the ambulances and the charting systems because they're both different, would would benefit the town, such as like with the fire department side. It's, we can go up to Stony Hill. If if I'm out in the Stony Hill area and they get a call and I have my gear, I can get on their truck because I know we're covered by town insurance and it's all, that's all the same. It's a little bit different with EMS. We have different insurance companies, different rules and regulations. And and our people would need to be covered on their insurance and their people would need to be covered on ours. And and that's kind of like where the where the hard part of getting this done is to to combine everything is getting everyone on the same page. But a a start would be to be able to combine the two pools of EMTs and EMRs to staff these ambulances more. Um, like Chief Parciaseppi said, once again, you know, it it would lessen the load on on, you know, one department trying to cover everything.
Yes, Scott, I agree. I mean, in the past, Scott, I don't know, I don't know when it got undone and why it got undone and who who undone, who undone it, if that's good English. But we 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 used to have a combined staffing list that we sent to the state, right? And some somehow, you know, after I kind of rolled off the pitcher, it it got, it it changed, right? But we used to have a duplicate membership list with, as far as the PSA went, for staffing, you know, that the state requests. The staffing list was the same, right? So we so we could we could do that, right?
Maybe you can help fill that in. When when did these? When did these changes happen? Not only that, but you mentioned that at one point, the the two fire services did a longer-term capital plan that included more and then then the town didn't want it anymore. When did when did that change?
Tommy, I don't know. Do you remember? We did it. We did it for years. I can I can look on my.
Well, I mean.
You know, we include stuff like air packs and.
No, we still do. I mean, you haven't been chief, Kenny, for six years, but yeah, no, we Baker has it now to do for this year for a five-year plan. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we used to include anything over like ten K along the on the list, right? You know, so how has EMS changed over the years? You know, it's a long story, a long contentious story. Um, you know, at at one point in time, there was one PSA for the town. Um, there were staffing constraints on on one department versus the other. There was some animosity between the two and the PSA was separated, right? You know, now we say, in retrospect, it, you know, it would be beneficial to be one, but there's still some animosity based upon that time from when that happened years and years ago, right? Probably, you know, almost almost thirty, if I can remember.
Well, you know, what you're what you're saying just tells me even more that that we're on the right track in forming a commission because, you know, okay, look at, look at the three of us, you know, you got me and Paul and Rich. And Paul and Rich know a heck of a lot more about what you guys do than I do. Um, but I came into this not knowing anything about how fire and EMS systems work. I came from the private sector and I think that a that a combined fire and EMS commission could provide a lot more consistency for you guys to your benefit.
Because I I don't, I don't disagree, Matt.
I I I'm I'm boggled that you used to do some of the things that I'm trying to do now and somebody told you to stop doing it.
Well, maybe maybe Chief Calvert Gallagher corrected me, but I but I I've I've gone to some of the budget presentations and never never seems like those things get highlighted. I mean, maybe it gets, maybe it's done in the background with the Board of Finance, but, um, you know.
Yep.
But, you know, in in with all the respect, when the departments present those, that they gotta be taken with some some earnest and have to be acted upon, right? If if you just constantly submit them and then nothing really happens with them, it just kind of gets gets disappointing. And I think, you know, part of the part of the challenge is, and and I've said this when I was chief and doing the budgets, you know, as and I know accounting and ledgers are are complex and there's advantages to do certain things. But when you move money in and out of the budget versus the capital budget and the budgets of the the departments fluctuate up and down by varying degrees because of the of the accounting in the background, it just causes confusion amongst everybody, right? One year, the budget's down fifteen percent, next year is up twenty percent because what, you know, in the end, the expenses are pretty consistent, but depending upon where the town chooses to fund them from on the ledger, um, makes makes the budgeting process a little more complicated, right?
All right, good feedback. Thank you. All right, any 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 further comments? No? Paul and Rich, you guys have any any other?
No, I I think this was enlightening, frankly, uh, you know. I like the idea of calling this the Fire EMS Commission. I like the idea of having, uh, the chiefs or representative from each department as an advisory thing because, you know, it takes the politics out of the whole thing. And, uh, you know, I I find also the fact that some of these things that we assume that the town was doing, it's really not paying for it, but should be paid for. So the perfect reason to have a fire commission.
All right, great. Well, okay, going going once, going twice. Any other any other closing comments before we, uh, before I start cooking dinner?
We'll be over.
What's for dinner?
Stir-fried beef. All right. Hey, listen, guys, thank you very much for your feedback. If you think of anything else, just email it in. Uh, we're not voting on anything tonight. Uh, I think the three of us are gonna digest what we've heard. It got some really good suggestions and I appreciate, uh, the time you put into this. So, um, I think it was a very productive discussion. So unless anybody has anything else they want to add, um, and hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion, motion by Rich, second by Paul. Okay, great. Those in favor?
Aye. Thanks again, guys, for showing up.
Yeah, thank you very much. You guys have a have a have a nice Thanksgiving and stay safe. Put on your masks.
Be safe, yeah.
Be safe.